Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Russell County Board of Supervisors November the 7th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. I'd like to first start off with a call to order, a roll call. Tim Lovelace.
Here.
Carl Ray.
Here.
David Eaton.
Here.
Steve Brady.
Here.
Rebecca Di.
Here.
Horace Christian.
Present.
And Luann Wallace.
Here.
Ma'am, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, we're going to have an invocation, and please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Caleb?
Let us pray. Father God, Lord, we thank you for this day, and we thank you for all the many blessings you have given us. We thank you for allowing us to come out and be together and be a part of our local government, Father. Forgive us for where we fail you each and every day. Lead, God, and direct us, and, Father, bless this nation, Father. Be with us during the elections tomorrow. Be with us, lead us, guide us, and direct us, in your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask for the approval of the agenda, but I do think we have some amendments, and I'm going to take a couple of suggestions or motions from the board.
Yes, ma'am chair. I'd like to amend the agenda and add, under request, and the county administrators, pardon, number eight, for the Sword Creek Community Center installation of the heating and cooling system.
The HVAC proposal, okay. And we have some minutes I need to have added. So, I'll make that motion to add, I guess we'll make it, it's October the 13th, and it was a meeting with the Attorney General, and it was on a Thursday, so we need to add that to our minutes to be approved. Okay, and now I also need to add, under the public hearing for presentation at number two, I'm going to request that we add Valid Healthcare System. They need to do a little presentation for us tonight, so we've really needed that.
I'll make that motion, ma'am chair.
Madam Chair, if you could just have one motion that includes all those to approve the agenda with those added, because we have a bunch of motions that don't have any seconds.
I'll make the motion to do all three.
Thank you.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the agenda? If not, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies. Okay, first of all, is our public hearing for the Russell County property and the Honeacre Pool property. So, I'm opening up our public hearing right. Do we have any comments at all from the audience? We explained this last meeting, what was to happen. I'm going to call for it one more time. Anyone in the audience that would like to speak concerning the public notice for the transfer of property? Okay, I'll officially close the public hearing. We're going to let the, wait just a minute, wait just a minute, let me look, let me look.
And we need to survey that property, I think.
Lonzo provided the survey to me today, so...
Your microphone, please.
Lonzo provided the survey to me today, so, once I get the, once he sends me a copy of the final approved plan, I can do the deed.
Okay, so do we need a motion tonight?
Yes, it would be a motion to convey this property, the surveyed piece of property, to the Russell County School Board, subject to final preparation of the deed by legal counsel.
Thank you very much.
I'll make that motion.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Are we all good? We've had a public hearing, so the public must be good. Okay, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much, board. At this time, we'll hear a presentation from our Valid Healthcare System. Thank you for coming, we appreciate you. Your microphone might need to be tweaked. Thank you, Greta.
Sorry. Greta Morrison, Administrator and CNO of Russell County Hospital. So, are you driving?
Yes, I'm driving.
All right. So, this is Valid Health's statement. Our mission is to honor those we serve by delivering the best possible care. Some of our initiatives have become a national model for improving rural health, which would include Russell County Hospital and consistent delivery of value and high quality of care and improved population health. Okay, we have 21 hospitals, we have over 13,000 team members, $2.2 billion of annual revenue, and we employ 750 providers. Annual discharge is over 90,300,000 in annual outpatient visits and 336,000 ED visits. We cover 8,600 square miles. Just keep going. So, nationwide, more than 136 rural hospitals were closed since 2010, but we've committed to keeping our rural hospitals open, and we're expanding healthcare and re-imaging rural healthcare. Okay, we've invested $20 million to reopen Lee County, so those of you who know what happened in Lee County, that hospital was back and forth under different ownership and was closed, but it did reopen and has been very successful. They have 10 modern beds in the facility that service that community, and since they opened, they have met the expectations of the community. So, in October of 2021, Valid Health teamed up with ETSU and announced the creation of the Appalachian Highlands Center for Nursing Advancement at ETSU. Part of our goal was to attract and retain more nurses in rural communities across the Appalachian Highlands. The center, nursing staffing shortages throughout the state-of-the-art training and education and implementation of the center creates a local pipeline for high schools to advance their education. We continue to grow through telehealth, and so... ...part where Russell County will bring services that normally is not available in our hospital, and so we are able to connect with more than 300 providers and specialty physicians. Program has expanded access to nurse care to thousands of people, and this is going to be a game changer for our hospitals, especially Russell County.
Oh, did I go too far?
One. Go back, let's see. No, you were on the right one, sorry. So, the Strong Futures Future is, was a facility in Greenville that's full capacity. It expands the children's network. We also expanded children's network to include Johnson Memorial Hospital, to add Nice Wonger Children's there. Expansion of the school-based virtual urgent care and behavioral health, so we have providers that actually offer the telehealth services in schools. Expand Nice Wonger's Hospital for the prenatal and pediatric institute and state-of-the-art neonate intensive care unit, and opening the pediatric emergency department at Bristol Regional, October of 2020, and at Indian Path in September of '22. So, since 2019, we have invested our workforce, increasing the hiring rates for nurses, plus increases for bedside nursing and support staff, launching special bonuses or recruitment incentives, and developing new childcare centers for families to be able to come to work and have their kids taken care of, doubling the annual wage index increases for all team members, and doubling the on-call pay. This adjustment resulted in $120 million investment in wages. It has increased our team members' wages 19.16% overall and increased 40% of base hiring rates. Increases will include 4% this year of their base pay. The ranges include 22, it went from 22 to 27 hourly for the tertiary facilities, and 25 for the rural hospitals. So, this was $2 million investment into population health, and we worked alongside organizations to support specific goals and strategies, and this ranges from social support services for women suffering from addiction, and launching a new primary mobile unit of August of 2022. In 2021, Valid Health announced a major investment into special needs for pregnant women, babies, and families who suffer from addiction. The Strong Futures is a house based in one of our hospitals in Greenville for pregnant women and mothers who suffer from addiction or need behavioral health services. The program provides a range of residential and intensive outpatient behavioral health services that help ensure strong possibilities, new beginnings for women and children. So, this is, so that's about Valid for Russell County Hospital. For this past year and upcoming year, we've invested $965,500 into our facility, and this includes, we renovated our clarity unit for behavioral health to make it safer for our patients. We've renovated the floor, med search floor, for $85,000. The Rural Health Clinic in Lebanon has had an increase of $82,000, and the Rural Health Clinic in St. Paul has had renovations totaling $88,000. We've got several other renovations that go into this, some of that being in the emergency department and the hospital exterior. The equipment purchases, sorry, include $65,000 for an ultrasound machine for the bedside for the ED, a Locust device which will allow the providers for CPR, and then some other, we did invest $60,000 in medical beds, which we plan to increase over the year. And then miscellaneous was, the equipment needs was 210, and the miscellaneous for future plans is 845,000. So, these are some of the sponsorships we, for the town Lebanon, $5,000. We did invest in the Honeacre Red Bud Festival, the scholarships for Russell County, supported the horse show, and then we've also given free flu shots to the local police, fire, and EMS, and those are free of charge. We also invested for the Haunting on Main and the Relay for Life, and then also we donated water donation to all three schools for their spring sports sessions, and then the coal bowl. And then also, we did invest in the ultrasound program at Southwest, that's not listed on here, that Valid Health did invest to be able to start that program. Okay, anybody questions?
I've got one.
Okay.
On the board authority, I've brought this up numerous times, about veterans care. Well, we're in the heart of Southwest Virginia, and most of our veterans have to travel either to Johnson City or Salem, or, you know, it's very, it'd be a perfect location for additional veterans care. And I know I've mentioned it numerous times to them about some of the specific things that maybe you all could look into to be able to take care of the veterans, so they don't have to travel such far distance. I know that I've talked to some of the legislators and congressmen about, you know, having this advantage here in Russell County would be at such a contributing point.
Are you talking about primary care?
Primary care.
Okay. So, once, you're not talking about once they're hospitalized, you're talking about actually just primary care in general?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, what's like...
If you could, I would really appreciate it. I mean, it would be a great opportunity to have them be able to get help here locally, and not have to travel in such far distance. The ones I talk to, it's a really trying situation. Once they have to go all the way to Johnson City, and then, you know, then I've talked to them that went to Beckley, and they get to run around, and they have to make multiple trips, but if it's something you all could just look into, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay. I didn't introduce John, but he's with me tonight. He's actually the CEO for Johnson Memorial and Bristol Regional and for Russell County. He's who I report to, so he will, he'll take it back.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming, we appreciate your time. Sound pretty strict about stuff, remember. Thank you, Ms. Morrison, appreciate you. All right, moving on to new business. So, at this time, we're going to need the approval of the minutes of which we have added. We need three separate motions for this. So, I'll entertain a motion for the unapproved minutes of October the 11th.
So moved.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Next is the October 13th meeting.
I'll make a motion, we approve those minutes for October 20th, October 13th.
October 13th.
Sorry, I was not at that.
I will not take a motion from you.
I'll make that motion for the 13th.
I'll second it.
All right, I have a motion, I need, and I've got a second. Any discussions? All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Obstain.
Mr. Brady, Mr. Ray, thank you very much. Next, I need a motion to accept the unapproved minutes of October 26th.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Brady, I need a second, I have a second. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next, I need an approval of the expenditures.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion for the expenditures. I need a second.
Second.
I have a second from Mr. Ray. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, now, we've paid the bills and we've got our minutes. So, I have committee appointments for board consideration. We have upcoming Vicki Porter, five-year term for People Incorporated.
So moved.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Got a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any abstentions or any noes? All right. Ms. Porter, you are duly elected. Community Policy Management Team, I got a Jeffrey, help me with that, Brentle?
Brentle.
Thank you. Three-year term, I'll take a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
I have a second. Mr. Christian, I'm going to take that one. Mr. Lovelace, any discussion?
He currently serves as the Chair of that committee name.
Thank you very much. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Now, we've come to the citizen comment period, which is limited to three minutes. I'm asking for my paper. Okay, at this time, I'm going to take public comment, and I am going to take chairman's prerogative here, because I have promised the number-one seat to Ms. Shirley Brown. Didn't matter what time she came in, she's come a long way to talk to us. So, Ms. Brown, and you have, you have in your possession, each board member, what she's about to talk to is the discontinuance of the maintenance of roadway 871. Ms. Brown, it's all yours.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairwoman and members of the board. My name is Shirley Brown, and I own a home and property, along with my sisters, which borders State Route 871 in the Sowerwood Mountain section, District 3 of Russell County. This road is also bordered by property owned by my nephew, Daniel Music, by the Nature Conservancy, and by two familial cemeteries, the Fielding Music Cemetery and the Gilbert Cemetery. We received a letter from the Virginia Department of Transportation last week, as did your board, that they are preparing or proposing the discontinuance of the maintenance of this road, which is slightly less than four tenths of a mile. My main concern at this point is that access to these two cemeteries would eventually disappear. Despite assurances from VDOT nearly 30 years ago, access to that third cemetery on Route 722 has disappeared already since that road was rerouted in 1993. My parents and a large contingent of residents from Sowerwood Mountain addressed the board on October the 6th, 1993, when VDOT rerouted this road from Route 722, which is the main access road to the mountain. I've provided each of you with a scrapbook copy of an article that appeared in the Lebanon News, which highlighted that meeting. The fears and distrust of those present then are becoming realized today. The road was rerouted at the convenience of Clinchfield Coal Company to enable them access to strip mine the surrounding land. At the time, VDOT closed off one-half mile of Route 722. The VDOT spokesman explained at that time that the community would benefit from the new road, because it would be easier to maintain. Many residents loudly protested because the new road would be steep and would hinder access to three familial cemeteries. The disputed Route 871 was an offshoot that was created from Route 722 at that time. It dead-ends at the two cemeteries and has remained unchanged since then. I believe that any disruption to the road system there anyway will hinder future development of the new $5 million industrial park at Carbo, which is only seven miles from Route 722. Why stop road maintenance on any of these roads when you're trying to attract businesses? I further contend that we meet the minimum standards required by VDOT, which are three occupied dwellings and our businesses. My father, Berkeley Music, a World War II veteran, and my brother, Iron Music, a Marine veteran, along with others who served their country, are buried on that mountain. The residents there have asked very little of the government in the past 400-plus years, except for the minimum maintenance of the gravel road, of this gravel road over the past 50 years, to give them access to and from their homes. I respectfully request that the board support my efforts to keep this road in the VDOT system as it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Was there anyone else with you that wanted to speak on that tonight? If you'd like to speak, come to the microphone and give us your name and address.
It is several members of my family that has been buried in those cemeteries on Sowerwood Mountain, and even the funeral homes said it would be a, this for them, because if it wasn't maintained, they have had several funerals that they have taken care of in the last few years up there. So, and several family members, even people from out of state, has traveled to those cemeteries, and my family has served, and my late husband served in War II, and great uncles have served even in the Civil War. We haven't asked for very much over the years, just maintaining a way to the cemetery in our property on Sowerwood Mountain. And I even have copies of some of the funeral homes that addressed you.
I did bring those.
You didn't bring them in. I have, you know, Mr. Combs has wrote a letter, Honecker Funeral Home has wrote a letter where they have had service up there in the last few years, so it would be a, really a, bad for us to be able to travel to get to the cemeteries, the people that, all these generations, so...
Okay, thank you. Could you give me your name and address, please?
My name is Irene Sprouse, and I live in Castlewood, Virginia. I own property with the cemetery, and also other property out on Sowerwood Mountain.
Thank you, Ms. Sprouse.
Thank you.
Are we good? Okay, I've skipped around, and I apologize, but I took chairman's prerogatives on this. So, the next one in line is Larry Hughes.
Good evening, my name's Larry Hughes. I reside at 30 Glade Hall Drive in Lebanon, Virginia, District 5. I want to take time to thank the board members for your service. I am sure it poses many challenges, requires difficult decisions for most beneficial effects for the county citizens and residents itself. Thanks to each of you for rolling back the 2022 tentative text that was to be imposed back to the 2021, and have a balanced budget. But here lies my dilemma, the failure of the board supervisors to openly and properly notify the pending changes in the car tax code, even after Chairperson and the county administrators have been put on notice by the Commissioner of Revenue and Use later date March 25, 2022. I've had members of the board to tell me they did not recall being informed by the letter of pending tax changes until the board supervised meeting on Tuesday, 10/11/22. This includes members of the Budget Committee not being informed, and the committee having multiple meetings, and the topic is never discussed within the committee. During the October 11th meeting, the county administrator provided a very number intense reporting stating the county had imposed a new tax with the possibility of providing a 10% reduction, which is the taxpayers. The numbers was, the numbers was a game, was overwhelming and hard to follow, which was, it just smoke and mirrors to circulate and confuse the listeners. Well, I believe, I do think, was not alone, it was confused by the rapid presentation of the numbers. However, I am concerned that the communication failures occurring within the county's business activities, both specifically between the board members, the chairperson, and the county administrative staff. How is it that the following meeting upon October 26th, the votes was mistakenly brought back to the 2021 tax law, albeit according to the county administrative, so it could not be done in the meeting before? As stated previously, per Virginia Constitution, you, the board, and your staff, faithfully and impartially discharge all the duties and comfort on each of you. You furthermore are elected as management, and since you are the peacocks trustees in service in all terms of minimum to your voters. Why did you fail in your early budgetary development? Why was your board not fully informed of the pending tax changes that would greatly influence the new budget? I want to read you the description of the duties of the county administrator, administrative managers, as outlined on the Russell County Board of Supervisors webpage. It reads as this, "The county administrator, appointed by the Board of Supervisors, serves as chief administrative officer and performs duties outlined by the Code of Virginia. He is responsible for the proper management of all the affairs of the county which are within the board's authority to control, under direction of the board." Again, "under direction of the board," which the assistants of the administrative manager or the county administrator are responsible for preparation and the recommendations for our annual budget for the county. Then the individuals keeps the board informed of the county's financial conditions and oversees the policies and priorities established by the board supervisors. It may just be me, but I think my fellow citizens are concerned and want to know how you, the board, are going to rectify this failure communication. In early meetings, I ask you to hold a closed meeting to evaluate the communication failures. It is my sincere wish that the board take the initiative to resolve these issues. We do not want the county populace to have to revert to citizen litigation to handle this question of communication failures, and your legal obligation to manage the affairs of the county as our trustees in the most ethical and sound business process. We thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Next, I have Roy Castle. Mr. Castle, is today your birthday? Is today your birthday?
Today says I've been around 95 years.
Mr. Castle, from Castlewood, Virginia, is 95 years old today. We're glad to have you. What can we do for you, sir?
I wanted to speak on two things. Kingland Heights subdivision, I like. Kingland Heights subdivision, I'd like you to put that on the spring. Check up, see what needs to be done to that subdivision road. It involves a half a mile circle paved. It'll need some attention. The other thing I want to talk about is the Sheriff's Department. I'd like to ask the board if they could set up some kind of a banquet for the Sheriff's Department to show their appreciation for watching over us while we work, while we play, while we sleep. Those guys are laying their life on the line every day out there. If the board would set up some kind of a banquet for people of Russell County to come in and see the men that are watching over them. Wouldn't have to be elaborate, just snacks, drinks, get to know each other, and show those guys how we appreciate what they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Castle, and happy birthday from all of us. I have one more on the list, and it may have been I overlooked. Alice Music? Alice isn't going to, all right, all right. I just want to make sure that I'm not leaving anyone off. Okay, public comments are finished at this time. Thank you, guys. Sorry about that. Next, we have Constitutional Officers Reports. I got one tonight. Wow. Thank you, ladies, for coming.
Good evening. I want to talk to you tonight about the employee bonus ordinance that you're going to be having here just in a little bit. We're very appreciative. I know that all the employees are very appreciative of the bonus that you guys have set for two hundred and fifty dollars. But I'd like to talk to you and ask you if you could think about increasing that. I know the school is giving their full-time employees a thousand dollars and their part-time five hundred. The town of Homeacre has given their employees on a scale according to their seniority an equal from two hundred and fifty to five thousand dollars. I've talked to the town of Lebanon, and they are going to be giving something also out of their American Rescue Funds, and that's where ours could come out of. They haven't set the amount yet. So I just wanted to bring that to you. I know we've had a lot of employees that worked hard during the pandemic. They kept their offices open. We kept business going as usual. And not to say that we're not appreciative of the two hundred and fifty, but I would like to see if there's something you can do to increase it to match what the school system is giving their employees. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to the County Attorney Reports and Request. Ms. Patton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Russell County Employee Bonus Ordinance that Alicia just referenced, this was an ordinance that was initially taken up in May of this year, and it was advertised at that time as a Russell County DSS employee bonus. And I think after some consideration, the motion was made by a board member and was ultimately approved to provide a two hundred and fifty dollar bonus to all county employees. But after, I was not aware that was going to be a motion made. You can change ordinances after they've been advertised, but you have to be careful that they would comply with the notice. And it was brought to air. I did advise Lonzo that I did have some questions about that, but ordinances are presumed valid unless challenged. But after that, we received notification that an individual had requested, had concerns about the enforceability of that ordinance. So I advised, Lonzo wanted to look into it, and I think he did. I ultimately advised that the easiest way is just to re-advertise it to include all of Russell County employees. And so my understanding is Lonzo has done that. He has re-advertized it for a Russell County Employee Bonus Ordinance. But that ordinance, it cannot be taken up tonight because it does have to be advertised twice. And so that would need to be something on, at the board's pleasure, at the December meeting.
Okay, so there we are. That's just for information sharing, right?
Yes, there's no action that can be taken on that.
Thank you very much. All right, next.
Yes, Madam Chair. All I have is information really tonight. The next thing is the Russell County Technical Assistance Committee. And what this is really going to be for is for potential ordinances or resolutions for the board to consider. I know in the past, when there's been some interest in adopting an ordinance, the board has asked me to draft one. And when I do that, I look at it for legal enforceability, and I'm not always aware of concerns of the citizens and other issues like that. So I discussed this issue also with my boss, Mr. Campbell. And I won't take credit. It was his suggestion that, you know, perhaps it would be good to form, when we have time to do this, that we form a committee to address these ordinances. That way, the board members, at least a couple of board members and other people can have input in drafting these ordinances. I think, you know, when I would do, the way we've done it in the past, that I would draft an ordinance, and then there would be changes that would be made, and then there would be several drafts floating around, which would lead to confusion. Hopefully, this way, there'll be like, there'll be one ordinance that everybody works on. So hopefully, they'll have, you know, if it's something that the board does end up adopting, there will be minimal changes. And so the next ordinance that Lonzo has requested me to look at, and I know that the IDA has expressed interest in the board adopting a solar ordinance because they've had interest from companies in undertaking some of those projects. So that would be the first committee for the chair to appoint. And my understanding is that the makeup of these committees will change based on different ordinances and different areas of expertise board members have, and also members of the community that may have helpful expertise in a certain area that would be appointed to help in drafting these ordinances.
Okay, so tonight, and these board, our board members have received a letter from me, the chair, and basically stating some of the concerns that we've all had. And also, I'm taking chair's prerogative to begin that list of committee members. And so if anybody else, you all have seen the list. So if anybody else has anybody they want to stick on there, I've got Steve as representing the board supervisors and Mr. Lovelace. So those are our solar representatives for this committee. And so then I've got Mr. McFadden, representing the IDA. Staff is going to be Lonzo, you, Ms. Patton, and Josh Stinson, the building official, who will have to be part of that. Also, because of the solar, the vast projects that's going to take place as far as solar goes on property owners, I've asked the Nature Conservancy to have someone at the table. They own about forty thousand plus acres in Air County that may or may not be affected, and they may need to be a partner on this. I've asked from Soul Smart, the solar work group that is working in southwest Virginia. I've asked for a representative to be on that, and also from Virginia Department of Energy. They have a template already in place for ordinances to do this. I have also asked that Mr. Eaton's son, Joshua Eaton, who has some experience in the solar industry, would be part of that technical assistance committee. Who did I leave off? Can anybody remember? I'm just going by head, my head. But anyway, if I did not announce anyone's name tonight, you will be contacted for further expertise in how we need to draft this. And please, board members, look in your attorney report because Ms. Patton speaks to the ordinance, a solar ordinance. It's not as simple as we all think. Yes, and one more, Cumberland Plateau Representative Scotty Wampler or his designee. So I'm waiting back to hear from that. So that was my other one I added along with Mr. Eaton's son. So I'm taking chairman's prerogative, Mr. Lester. That is our committee for the solar ordinance. If anyone in the public feel like that they have some expertise in solar, and you're listening to us tonight, or you're here in this room, you're very welcome to contact myself or Mr. Lester and be placed on that committee. We would love to have input. I don't see any more than maybe two meetings, considering that Virginia Energy has got the template, so to speak. I don't think it's going to be extremely hard to deal with, and those can be by Zoom. So I have asked that that happen, so make sure that everybody knows if you've got Zoom, or it can be a hybrid of in-person and Zoom. All right, I've hammered enough on that. I'll move on. County Administrator Reports and Requests. Thank you, Mr. Lester.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First on the county administrator reports is, of course, we're getting ready to come up on the new year, the new legislative year. I have put in the board's packets some VACO preliminary legislative programs that VACO will be considering and taking a look at that's hit their radar as far as upcoming legislative with the new administration, from economic development all the way through health and human services, environmental and agriculture, finance, energy, and education, and transportation. Now, this is a draft of preliminary. This will grow in size. As y'all all know, each year, by the time we get to January in the legislating, this will be fine-tuned and honed and added and deleted and modified. So if you had an opportunity, take a look at all the different topics that are coming up before the legislation. Next on the county administrator reports is, of course, the Bristol Transportation District Regional Improvement Commission. This is AKA the Casino Board. I don't know why they have called it Transportation, but that'd be the first piece of legislation. I do change the name, but anyhow. But we've had a couple of meetings on that. And one of the things that I want to, you know, make sure that the county is aware of, the board is aware of, these funds are appropriated annually. And so GM McLaughlin, when they built the casino, they wanted to ensure that the thirteen counties and thirteen municipalities that got an opportunity for this funding. So in this funding, we all equally share. So this is the way the board is developed, and this is the way that we're going to participate. It's appropriated annually. So we will not see the first payment on this until July. So that will come in the new budget year. Now, what we're doing in the meantime is the Department of Taxation is appropriating to the authority, but we cannot give it out until annually. But one of the things that we're working with local legislators, Senator Pillion and Delegate Oakwin, is we're going to try to have that changed into a court appropriations in the new fiscal year. But right now, we're stuck under the current Code of Virginia. So we'll be looking at that. And also, one of the other additional things that you'll see coming up, right now, this can only be spent or expended on by the terms and condition is transportation, education, and public safety. That's the three terms that come up with. Well, there's one other classifications that we wanted added on to it, and I don't know why they didn't think about it when they did it, was tourism. The casino is tourism. Well, one of the things that supports this entity and our partnership with them is, of course, tourism. So we're going to see if they can carve out part of that to take care of our additional tourism, the way we partner with them. When you walk through the casino in the future, you will be able to see pics and videos of Russell County, the pinnacles, the spearhead trails, and it will be partnerships, and there'll be shuttles coming back for when they finally get this fully developed. But that's the short version. But again, the important part is we only get the funding right now in July, so it's appropriated once annually. Now, under the county ministry request is, next thing is the funding, Department of Corrections, we have got a grant from the Department of Criminal Justice Services for three new RSOs and a total of one hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-four. One RSO will be for the vocational school, one for the Belfast, and one for Swords Creek. The Russell County Sheriff's Department has worked along with the schools to get these additional grants for a total of one hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars for these three additional schools. I need a motion and appropriation for one hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred eighty-four dollars.
Okay, I have a motion. I need a second. Okay, got several. Good. Thank you all. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Next on the county ministry request is, of course, Ms. Brown had got up and spoke during citizens' comment on the VDOT notice of proposed Route 871, the roadway discontinuance. After conversations with VDOT even up till this morning, we are going to work on this to see if we can make sure that these citizens and residents and the heirs that have access to the cemetery. So we're putting that into the covenants and the deeds to make sure that no one is landlocked or in the Code of Virginia. You can't restrict someone access to the cemeteries. So we're making sure on our end that VDOT is working with us to make sure that this happens along with the Nature Conservancy and the adjacent property owners. Yes.
What triggered the idea of closing this road to begin with?
VDOT first sent the county and the adjacent property owners a letter, and here's what they stated. And this is their language, and they do this on rural routes, and it's based off of traffic volume. Here's what they said, "The road no longer provides a level of public service to warrant a continued maintenance at the public expense." See, there's no property owners up there. It was a proposed route that at one time was going to be to develop, and it didn't go that way. When they ended up doing Route 722, they ended up not developing it. It was, they were at one time going to, they built a partial road in, and it was never hardtopped. It was just gravel, and they ditched it, and they put it in, and it was never further developed. And that was when Clinch Code was in there. So they changed the routes and went on, Clinchfield. Thank you, ma'am. Correction. Clinchfield. Thank you. We deal with quite a few coalfields. But again, back, it was initiated from VDOT. They said, "The road no longer provides a level of public service to warrant continued maintenance of public service." And that's any route you got. If you have no road, you know, no houses on it, that was their conclusion, so.
So if they close, initially they not close this road, the people can still have access to these cemeteries or to the property adjacent to this proposed, used to be a proposal?
The road that's in place right now, what happens when VDOT discontinues it? It, yes, it goes back to reverse to the adjacent landowners, and that's correct. Then, of course, one of the biggest property owners that we have in Russell County is the Nature Conservancy. That is where the cemetery sits, is on the Nature Conservancy property. And they work with many. They've got a lot, a lot of cemeteries on their property, out of forty-four thousand plus acres they got in Russell County. So they will work with us. We'll put all that in together. We will have a letter from them to give to the adjacent property owners along with VDOTs. So that way, they have access to this, you know, to the cemetery of the state. Anyone or family members will have this to be able to pass.
I wouldn't want to agree to jeopardize during use of the road or get into the cemetery or anything like that. I wouldn't be in favor of that.
Absolutely. I guess my biggest issue isn't just the maintenance. Because it's hard to get to these cemeteries in this rural areas. I mean, and when you can't get access, you know, whether you have one house or three houses, but you've got people, they are buried in those cemeteries that needs to have maintenance to that road, because if somebody don't maintain it, it's going to be rough to get in and out there because most of the cemeteries around these areas up on these hills and mountains, it's pretty tough on these people that don't have either support from one or the other. And I know the county don't have any roads, so, and we can't get gravel like Buchanan County does. But it's really hard on these people as we have an aging community, and these people get older, they can't do it. So I'm not for, unless they can, something's done with the maintenance side of that, I'm not going to support this.
I think we're just listening right now because this is in VDOT's hands, and we'll have to wait till, they have to have a public hearing.
Does the board need to take any action on it? Not tonight. No, no, it does not. After talking with Ms. Brown and talking with VDOT this morning, they will have, the next step of action will be a public hearing. And that, Ms. Brown has already talked with VDOT herself. She's had many communications with Lebanon residency. Yeah, yeah, and Carl Ray and myself, yeah, we've all talked with her. But one of the things that we, you know, the board wanted to do is But one of the things that we wa- you know, the, the board wanted to do is make sure they got access to the center. That's, that's the key component.
Well, um, David was talking about, uh, keeping the road up. We have a family cemetery, and we have, you know, joined together to keep the road up, so it's, we had a, a burrow about two years ago, it was pretty tough. But if they could come together and be, and agreeable to keep the road up, where they could travel the cemetery or with the funeral procession and everything. But that's something, David, I guess they will have to work, I hope they can get something worked out with VDOT, but otherwise, they may have to, you know, come together and, um, and try work among themselves.
Yes, all, all this will come out in our public hearing which VDOT sets, um, and
Yes.
they will notify us, and we'll move forward. Is that correct, Mr. Lester?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Any more questions or comments on that?
Next on the county administrator request is, of course, the Russell County Tourism Coordinator position. This, uh, I'm asking for approval for hire on a full-time county tourism position. Again, I'm trying to get the casino to pay for this, because they're the ones acquiring all this additional work. So we've got an opportunity here to proceed forward, so, um, and in the previous one that we had been, uh, piecemealing on part-time, we had an intern that was doing great at this. And now we have, we've got to the point where we're going to be able to get the eligible funding, you got to have the position, so, yeah.
Tell us, tell us, come on, Lonzo.
So, so I need a, I need a, I need a motion for approval of the Russell County Tourism Coordinator position.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right, here we go. Good deal, thank you, finally. I'm calling for the motion. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, thank you.
Okay, as one of the annual traditions of the Russell County Board of Supervisors, you always give turkeys to the food pantries. Y'all have done this since I've been, I mean, this is just one of them. I need a motion.
I'll make it.
I'll say.
Oh, we got turkeys everywhere. I have a motion and a second for Thanksgiving turkeys. Uh-oh. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Yours is fine. I got one once I am. Next, again, from the board supervisor tradition, the Russell County Employee slash Christmas, uh, Thanksgiving, you know, either hammered turkey or gift certificates. I need a motion for
I'll make it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for Thanksgiving Christmas gift bonuses or certificates, I'm sorry, let's call it that.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last one was the one that was added, um, of course, I, that all board members had on the forum. We went out and got bids on the Swords Creek, uh, proposed community center, uh, for a HVC unit. The, it had oil in it, they had an oil facility, uh, furnace in it, and that has to be replaced, it could not be repaired. So we went out with bids, and I need an approval on the bids for Thermco for the HVC unit at the Swords Creek Community Center.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, I have a motion, I need a second. For Thermco HVAC to accept their proposal, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, uh, any discussion further?
Can we use, uh, ARPA funds on this?
No, ma'am, no, sir, no, sir.
This comes out of county budget, yes, sir.
Yes. All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you.
The reason, Steve, it's being, if it had a HVC, I could do it, if it was apples for apples change.
Renovation.
Yeah, it, it, it's a renovation. If I'd had an HVC unit and it went down, I could have done HVC to HVC. But we're changing to an oil. The feds. Auditors. But, Madam Chair, that concludes county administrative reports and requests. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much. The next thing I see on the agenda, oh, by the way, um, there was a couple of pieces of, uh, information added into your packet, the papers, um, I think you've got the school board information, and you also have some DSS information, so it's there. And, uh, next I'll take board discussion and reminders. Remember, I'm reminding you, no motions, just tell me what you think. Tim, I'll start with you.
I'm good, thank you.
Carl?
No, Madam Chair, I have nothing.
David?
I would like the board to consider our employees. I know they have worked through the pandemic, and if we can't help them and do more, I, I would support that. I, it, it's a very trying job, and our employees do a wonderful job, so I just want to say I appreciate what they do and anything we can do to help them.
Okay, anything else? Thank you. Mr. Breeding?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Di?
Now, I'm like David, I will support whatever we can do for our employees.
Okay.
I'm the one that made the motion.
Mr. Christian? Microphone, please.
I okay, I can echo what David and Rebecca said, I'll support it.
Very good. And chairwoman tonight, I usually don't have anything, but I will say that, uh, concerning some comments that we've had in the public lately, there are videos to all of our meetings, including, uh, May, May 10th, I will say, and, uh, other meetings that we've had. So please take some time out and, um, watch them for your bedtime enjoyment, I guess, it might put you to sleep. Anyway, at this time, uh, I will see you all next month. What's our time? Our date?
December the 5th.
December the 5th, 6 o'clock.
That is the night of the parade.
Well, we shall, uh,
The 6.
Okay. Are we good to go with that? All right, that's the date. We'll be here. Thank you all. I adjourn this meeting.